I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Mike Glenn, could you call, roll call please?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavis.
Present.
Commissioner Jackama.
Present.
And Mayor Sagata is not at this this evening.
Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to hear a crowd say the allegiance with us. Very nice to have so many in the audience. Thank you for coming. There will be a special City Commission meeting on Thursday, August 22nd at 6:00 PM 2019. The regular meeting scheduled on August 27th will, is canceled due to a conflict within the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference which is held in Las Cruces. There's a notice of potential quorum, quorum of the City Commissioners who will attend the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference in Las Cruces, which is August 28th through the 30th. We have a very special You Rock Award. We'd like to recognize Mr. Donovan Mendez, who has received some very significant. Commissioner Chatterley will read your award.
And then we'll have you tell us a little bit about it. So, the Rattone City Commission presents the You Rock Award to Donovan Mendez, 2019 U.S. Presidential Scholar for your outstanding academic achievements, leadership, citizenship, service, and contribution to your school and community. Presented this 13th day of August 2019, signed by Mayor Pro Tim Schuster. Tell us a little bit about it.
Okay. So, this started off about, at the beginning of my senior year, Mrs. Simpson, our school counselor as you guys know, she addressed me, myself and another student, and asked if we would like to apply for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. And so, at that point, there were about 3.2 million students at large, and so, the basic process was she had to write about each of us, and it would be submitted to the state level, and the state level will submit a certain amount of students to the national level. And so, from those 3.2 million students, I believe, it was about 3,200 chosen from that pool, and I was one of them, thankfully. And so, we had the, we also had the opportunity to say, well, would you like to go on with this, with the process of it? And I said, of course. And so, we went ahead and we started the application process. The application consisted of a few essays about myself, my academic resume, and everything else I've done in the community. So, they've done, they took all of that into account, and from there, from about 3,200, it went down to 161 of us Presidential Scholars. I got to represent New Mexico as a whole this year for 2000, the 2019 year with Abigail Privasova. She's a student from Albuquerque, and I got to present, represent Rattone and New Mexico in Washington DC this summer, and along with the 160 other scholars. And so, while I was there, I received a medal at the medal ceremony, the medallion ceremony. I could pass it around. If you flip it on the backside, you can see that my name is engraved with it, with our president's signature. I'll pass it around to you guys. And we were also given a yearbook with all of the scholars' faces and names in them. I'll flip right to my page. You can see, I'm right here, along with the 160 other scholars. And also in our yearbook, through the application process, we were asked to submit one inspiring teacher, and that teacher is here with us, Mrs. Jo Alm. So, she's along with 160 other teachers in, in the book who inspired us scholars, and so, that's a huge honor to her as well. You can see I'm practicing. Like I said, I would just like to thank you guys and the city of Rattone and Rattone High School for giving me the opportunity to not only serve our community throughout my entire high school year, but to allow me to just be thankful to, that I'm from a great place such as Rattone. So, thank you guys.
Could you introduce your mom and dad to us?
Yes. So, my parents, George Mendez and Samantha Mendez. And then, as well, my grandparents, George and Anna Mendez. And then, Lena Alba is my other grandparent. And of course, Conya. And Mrs. Alm.
I think we'd like to have, including Mrs. Alm, anyone who would like to stand with you in this photo.
I give you your You Rock, and your pen. Yeah, so, anyone else you'd like to come up?
My Georgie.
Yeah. I'll kind of stand by him. We can scoot back a little, Donovan.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Let me push my glass.
Look in your best.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your hard work, Donovan.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, well now, thank you. Thank you all for coming. We'll take comments from the general public, and let me remind you, if you have a comment regarding something on the agenda, wait till that agenda item. Are there any comments in general at this time? Please introduce yourself.
My name is Carl Hickman. I reside at 208 South Forest Street here in Rattone. I've come to kind of address you guys today because I'm concerned about a proposed business that may be coming into the Rattone area. I say proposed because, to my knowledge, licenses have not been filed at this time for it. However, this is a very new type of business, and so, as a citizen, I felt I wanted to present my views to the City Council so that you would know about it upfront. Currently, there is a proposed sober house being proposed for the city of Rattone. It's an R1 zone property. The address is at 121 South Forest Street. My understanding of the proposed business is it's to use the aforementioned real property as a transitional living facility for women and their children, where an adult woman has recently completed a drug rehab program at a medical facility. I have two questions. My first question is being addressed by Mr. Scott Berry, and so, it's currently being worked, so I'll just briefly comment on what he's doing on that. My question was that this housing located on 121 South Forest Street is currently zoned as an RM1 multi-family house. And my question was, isn't this a primary, primarily a business which should not be located in the residential zone? And does the location require a zoning change, given the daily operation of the business, such as collecting payments, having meetings at the rehab folks, collecting them together, follow-up between their programs, and the administrator of the home? And so, I had that basic question, which is currently being addressed, is should this be a multi-family dwelling, or should it be changed to a drug addiction recovery facility? The other concern I have is, Mr. Scott, Mr. Scott Berry pointed me to the ordinances for the city of Rattone, and I went to that website, and although Rattone doesn't have currently any city ordinances governing the contact of sober living homes, there are some cities that do. And I've emailed this email to each of you, and copies of the other cities' regulations. They deal primarily with small, unlicensed residential care facilities. And these are how sober living homes are referred to in the states of California and Arizona. This is all very new. You may have heard that the federal government passed the CARE Act in 2018 for drug rehabilitation. Part of that legislation involves these type of homes and assisting these people in their recovery process. My concern outside of the zoning is, if they do come into Rattone, that there are some city ordinances that will balance the need for, the housing for these people with the needs of the current residents who are located in the area, and prevent any issues from crime, nuisances, or what have you. I understand the limitations on the city's governments and resources to kind of review this, but I would respectfully request that these ordinances are reviewed by the city attorney, and to report back to the City Council within six days, 60 days concerning their possible use for the city of Rattone. I understand the limitation on the city's resources, and I'm willing to volunteer my services to assist where I can in completing this effort. Before I yield to someone else who'd like to speak, is there any questions of me or of sober living homes that you may have?
Mayor Pro Town members of the Commission, if I could just kind of advise you, Mr. Hickman, and members of the Commission, I have asked the city attorney for a legal opinion regarding the land use issue, and I'll tell you, you know, how this ultimately can go, is we're awaiting a legal opinion from the attorney, and when he issues that, the staff in making an administrative decision will follow that legal guidance. And then, we have met with the group of neighbors that have concerns about it. We've also met with the organizers of the proposed facility. City attorney has gathered information on that to do his due diligence, and at the end, the decision will involve issuance of a zoning permit or denial of a zoning permit, and then, we'll advise all of the parties of their options following that. There are options for appeal in either case, either issuance or denial, and that appeal would be made to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission can also be appealed, and that, the City Commission would serve as the Board of Appeal in that case. And this is a little unsatisfactory, I think, to the neighbors, but that limits the Commission's ability to really engage in a discussion, because they would ultimately serve as the Board of Appeal, two steps down in our process. So, I think that you all are certainly welcome to address the Commission. I would advise you, Commissioners, you're very limited in your ability to answer questions or enter into discussion on the issue, because you will serve as the Board of Appeal ultimately in this issue.
That is accurate.
The only thing I want to add to that is, I totally agree with what Mr. Berry has said, but there are a couple issues. These types of homes in other states are in residential areas, okay? And that is because of some recent federal legislation. And so, there may be issues that zoning cannot address, and which ordinances by the city would address, similar to rooming houses. In the examples that I've sent to you and Mr. Berry, this is how the other cities have dealt with this issue as far as meeting standards for what these houses should be, is they've addressed them as rooming, um, rooming houses. So, with that, you know, I yield to some other one who'd like to speak, and I appreciate you giving me a forum to speak.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this issue?
Pro-Tim Mayor and Commission, I will make this very quick. I just wanted to say, I actually live two blocks from that area as well, and I'm very much in support of this happening. I understand that.
Say your name.
Sorry, Jessica Barfield. I do want to say, I work for the center, but this is actually very much me professionally and personally. I haven't been very involved in Project Restart, but I have seen a lot of different things happen over the course of this coming to fruition, and a business kind of coming up to support this community. I recognize there's planning, zoning, and a whole lot of different, different things to look at, and safety is of number one importance as being a neighbor in that neighborhood. I see that too. But stepping back, as a neighbor in my neighborhood, I also see a lot of drug activity that's already on the streets of Rattone, and I see these problems not really being resolved in the public sector at this point in time. I know that there's a lot of different movements happening. I just wanted you to know that, I know there's people that oppose it, but there's also a group of us that would love to see it happen. If we could come together and work together to find a happy medium, I think that would be the best for everyone involved. So, I just wanted to voice support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Virginia Duran, and I have a business, Creative Cuts, which is located next to this place that's going to be put up. My concern is, is that I run a business, and being that some of my clients have already heard what has happened, I've already lost like three clients due to it, because I have elderly clients, I have disabled clients, and they're worried about their safety. And being like, what was mentioned, that there's a lot of drug activity in that alley, and things happening, and so, my concern is, is why would they want to put this facility there, right smack dab in the middle of what they're trying to prevent? And to me, I think this residence is not a good location for it. Maybe where there's not as much drug activity, they should place it, because there's a lot of it there. And the thing is, my concern is my safety, my client's safety, and my family's safety, because, I mean, it's not even like five feet away from this residence, and if it does continue to be set up, I would hope that maybe somebody would put up a privacy fence to protect my clients, because I got a lot of security cameras, and it's a protection for me and my clients. So, I just, it's just, my concern is losing business. Because, you know, I, I do have a zoning license, and I do have all my permits and everything that I need. I have my, where the fire chief has come in and zoned, you know, checked for my fire extinguishers and everything, so I'm set up properly. Thing is, is I just don't want to lose business. I'm trying to help grow Rattone as a business, and if they do set this building here, then I would hope that somebody give me at least a year's advance notice, because I would like to move, and I would like to have the proper notification so that I can be able to do that, because it's my safety and everybody else's safety. So, that's just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other comments? On this topic or any other? All right. Excuse me. We'll move on to the, uh, item six, and A, approval of the August 6th Special Commission Meeting Minutes.
Mayor Pro Town, I'm going to abstain from this since I wasn't at that meeting.
All right.
I found no changes or anything. I make a motion to approve.
All right. Great, thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve the Special Commission Meeting Minutes held August 6th, 2019. All in favor, indicate by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This now is public hearing of fiscal year 2021 through 2025 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. And I will ask if anyone has any comments regarding that, to keep them polite and concise. Do we have any, anyone in the, in the audience who is concerned about the capital improvement plan?
Baron Commission, I will just provide you a little background information on this, and I would state that the public hearing is scheduled, because it's, I think, very important to get that input about the prioritization of our infrastructure going forward. And you can see that this is for a five-year period. Interestingly, starts in 2021. That's not our decision. That comes from Department of Finance Administration. This is a process that we conduct annually, and we are required to submit an update to our ICIP to Department of Finance Administration by September 6th of this year. So, we are gathering information now. Certainly, the input is important from the public. I gather input from department heads, from the utilities, to find out what's important from their perspective as far as infrastructure during that five-year period. And then, there's an input process to submit this to the state. There are certain avenues for funding down the road where the ICIP is important, and one of those is capital outlay process through the New Mexico Legislature. So, as we go forward, and we get closer to the legislative session, which generally occurs, begins in mid-January, we would try to identify our priorities for capital outlay, and then there's some work to do to submit those to the legislature, and then the legislature will consider that. And they certainly will look at the ICIP as far as how we set our priorities. It's very important that, to them, that the highest priorities really are what they consider. So, it's, it's important now, it's important to community development block grant, uh, project, that, uh, project that maybe we would consider somewhere during this five-year period be identified here, and so, it requires some looking forward. I will tell you that there are some programs where we would pursue funding, and we would plan infrastructure improvements where the ICIP is not very important. One of those would be our AIP program through Federal Aviation Administration for Airport Improvements. Federal Aviation does not look at our ICIP. They have their own process. So, there are some times when it's very important, some times when it might not be so important. So, there's some strategic value in how we prioritize these projects. And I'll hold up there, Mayor Pro Town, and let you again go to the public.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan?
Mayor Pro Town, I would comment that we would place this on the agenda for the August 22nd meeting. Again, that's a special meeting that we scheduled due to the conflict with the conference in Las Cruces. So, August 22nd, we will be scheduled for final action by the Commission on the ICIP. And the public has between now and August 22nd to give us input, and they can do that with, with a phone call to our staff, just make their thoughts known. They can write us a note, they can text that in, however it works best. You can drop by and, and let us know what you think, but that opportunity is open until August 22nd. Or, an interested party can attend the meeting on August 22nd and make their feelings known to the Commission as well.
And can you let the public know how they can scan through and look at the plan?
Um, yes. So, I'm going to turn to my city clerk, and I'm going to say that the current Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan is on our website. Is this correct?
It should be. I believe we did post it last year, and I don't believe we ever took it down, so if it's not, we'll make sure that it is.
Okay. Very good.
We could do a news flash to seek public comment, and then notice that final action will be taken on the 22nd.
Very good. Okay. Seeing no one coming up to the podium, let's move on to item C. Public hearing on proposed ordinance enacting a 0.2375% municipal gross receipts tax dedicated to the economic development. And I'm going to turn that back over to you, Mr. Berry.
Mayor Pro Town and Commission, myself and the city clerk have had numerous discussions with New Mexico Taxation and Revenue in, in regard to this increment. New Mexico Tax and Rev has reviewed our proposed ordinance, and we're very instrumental in the drafting of the ordinance. They have approved the form of the ordinance, so we brought this to the Commission for introduction at the last meeting. And I would note something important here, that this will be slated for consideration of final action by the Commission. Again, at the August 22nd meeting, I would point out to, to everyone in attendance here or listening, that that is a special meeting. That's not our, our normal meeting date because of the conflict with the Municipal League Conference. So, August 22nd, special meeting at 6 o'clock here, and again, like the last item, I think that we're looking for public input. Certainly, a big decision for the community. I would say it's one of these 20-year decisions that could set a direction for the community going forward, and we would ask the public to provide their comments on this proposal to our staff. We will then forward those comments to you. But we wanted to talk about this tonight and let the public know that the process is underway. Now, the proposal here would be to adopt this increment, .2375% for economic development. So, the ordinance that you, the draft of an ordinance that you have in front of you would have a dedication under section four that states, "The Rattone City Commission will dedicate revenue from this tax increment to be used for the purpose of economic development, benefiting the community of Rattone, New Mexico." And then it describes four specific description items below that, to ensure that the proceeds from this would go to economic development, and specifically, the activities that we have identified as being in our economic development plan. The number, .2375, that was developed by New Mexico Tax and Rev after their analysis of House Bill 479, typically called the D earmarking bill. And so, Tax and Rev has said that you, the Commission, can consider that increment, not more than that, in an unrestricted manner, and you can designate that for the purpose that the Commission selects. So, their term there is unrestricted. There probably would be a consideration of a full quarter set, however, that would be considered restricted then, and there would be a different process for that. However, with this unrestricted increment, the Commission could consider adoption of this ordinance by a vote of the Commission at the August 22nd meeting.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the general public?
My name's Joe Rodman, and I'm here representing High Bay Enterprises, a family business partnership. And normally, I'm not real supportive of new taxes, but at this point in time, our community, to have a viable community, we have to have jobs. And a part of that process is, we have to promote, any way we can, economic development. And so, I'm in full support of the city adopting this ordinance and going forward with something like this. If that happens, I would also like to suggest that the city administration and Commissioners continue the opportunities for dialogue of the citizens of Rattone, both private citizens and people that have businesses or potential industry partners, and have continual forums, forums that are done at least maybe every quarter, to get the input from the community about what they see the needs are, and how we go about utilizing the funding that would be generated, and then also be able to find out from the powers-to-be on how things are going. And, and so, with that, I really support the city doing something like this, and anything I can do to help, just. And anything I can do to help, just call on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments, questions, concerns, commissioners? And obviously, we're all pretty well informed on what we're trying to do with this. And so I think if you catch us in the grocery store or coffee shop, you're welcome to ask us, and we'll answer what we can. All right. Thank you. Deliberate and act on event forums. Ratone Main Street Gate City Music Festival, first street closures, August 30th through the 1st, as well as Ratone Homecoming Parade, first street closure on September 20th. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem, after looking at these and everything seems to be in order, I think we can have both of the items at one time.
All right. I believe that's all right.
Mayor Protem, I would just add that there are proposed street closures involved in both events. These are both events that we are very familiar with. We have worked with these groups in past years. Our staff has reviewed the applications again this year. We are typically looking at the safety of pedestrians and guarding against traffic movements, those kind of things, being able to respond to an emergency. The staff has reviewed those. You can see that they have concurred with the recommendations. My recommendation is for approval of both events, including the street closures.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to approve both the Ratone Main Street Gate City Music Festival, first street closures, August 30th through September 1st, and the Ratone Homecoming Parade, first street closure, September 20th.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve street closures and the event forums for the Main Street. Ratone Main Street Gate City Music Festival, first street closure, August 30th through September 1st, as well as Ratone Homecoming Parade, hope you all show up, first street closure, September 20th. All in favor, indicate by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. And thank you for the event sponsors for the hard work you put into making those things happen. All right, moving on. Deliberate and act on Colfax Ale Cellar Public Celebration Permit for Gate City Music Festival Concert at Schuler Theater.
Mayor and Commission, in your packets, you have a public celebration permit application from the New Mexico Alcoholic Beverage Control. That is a state permit, however, requires concurrence by the Ratone City Commission. And in dealing with this, I would like to call on our city clerk treasurer, Michael Ann Antinucci, who has some recent information regarding the New Mexico rules on this. So, Michael Ann, if I could call on you.
Last week, I went to Santa Fe, and I attended a special dispenser permit and celebration permit session that they had at the state offices. It was very well attended and a lot of good information. There were some changes that occurred this past legislative session. And so because we deal with these types of permits, and we also have our own governmental liquor license, it was important that I attend so that we can be abreast of the changes and the laws. One of the biggest changes was this agency changed their name. So they're now the Alcoholic Beverage Control Division, referred to as ABC. So this application that's in your packet looks a little different than what we've had in the past. This is a new application. So there have been some changes to it. I think we've dealt with public celebration permits before. A couple of meetings ago, you already did approve the celebration permits for the first street dance that they'll be having during the Gate City Music Festival. This one is specific to the Schuler Theater to serve alcohol at the Schuler during the headline of Josh Gallagher will be at the Schuler that Sunday evening. So that is the request before you. Some of the changes that also occurred during the legislative session, you will see on this permit that they've indicated as far as security. We do have the Ratone Police Department providing security. But in addition to that, licensed servers are also have the ability to serve as security as well. They just can't be serving the alcohol and being security as well. So we could have a combination of police and licensed servers. So Main Street's already assured Colfax Ale Cellar. You'll see from the floor plan that's attached, we do have to identify the areas where the alcohol will be served, which will be in the lobby. But the event goers will be able to take the alcohol into the theater itself and also into the balcony. So we've included those floor plans, the square footage. It's not on the one that's in your packet, but I did have to indicate square footage and a few other details as far as where alcohol could not be taken outside of the premises. So they're very strict about this, and they want to see that we have controls in place. Also, there will be wristbands. So they will be carding the individuals that would be consuming the alcohol, and they would have to wear a wristband. And then Main Street would actually provide some additional eyes within the auditorium to assure that there is no underage drinking. And I've discussed that with Jessica and Main Street.
Yes. I did just want to let you know that we actually have four people on our board that are alcohol servers, and they will be acting as a second set of eyes watching in the auditorium and upstairs throughout the event. We're going to have people posted up to make sure that we do what we can to keep Karen and their liquor license safe. I also wanted to tell you that this year, you are aware that we have three vendors down actually at the Beer Garden. And we thought this would be a really great way of just featuring our Ratone Brewery and making sure that their sales numbers are great for the Labor Day weekend and only having them there. We thought that this would add to the event and give them a little bit more business. So thank you for your consideration.
Very good.
Another change that resulted during this legislative session, there used to be a rule that you could not issue these permits within 300 feet of a church or a school, an active church or school. That provision has been removed from these. And they base that on the fact that when you say the brewery, I mean, they're a licensed premises that serves at that location all the time. These are just temporary two-, three-day events. And so that requirement, we would no longer have to provide any sort of a waiver if it was within 300 feet. So that was another change that you'll see on the application. Other than that, there is a new permit that we may see in the future. It's called a private celebration permit. It used to be that these breweries and winegrowers could not serve at a private invitation-only type event. But that has now changed as of July 1st. So they could possibly do a wedding or maybe a function at the museum. And so those may be some permits that we might see coming up in the future as well. So is there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the permit for the Colfax Ale Cellar Public Celebration Permit for Gate City Music Festival Concert at the Schuler Theater.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other additional discussion? Indicate by the sign of aye in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Colfax Ale Cellar Public Celebration Permit for Gate City Music Festival Concert at the Schuler Theater. Very good. Thank you. Item F. Deliberate and act on contract between City of Ratone and the Center for Community Innovation for Google AdWords and Digital Marketing Services for Explore Ratone. And I understand we have some visual aids.
We do. I'm going to show you a couple of things, but it actually won't take too much of your time. It's just some exciting things I wanted to show you. I appreciate you considering this contract as, it actually expired the end of June, and so we've just kind of continued forward. Lodger's Tax Advisory Board hasn't had a quorum. And so that is why we came directly to you tonight. This would be a continuation of the current services that we have. It's a $2,000 per month contract. And under that contract, we manage, update, and create content for exploreratone.com. We manage the Jack Rabbit Hotel Booking App, as well as oversee the $10,000 per month Google AdWords Grant that the Center has on behalf of promoting tourism and relocation to Ratone. So this isn't anything new, but I did want to share a couple of really quick numbers for you. So last year, we spent a total of $119,000 of our Google AdWords Grant. Over 2 million people saw advertisements about Ratone, and 84,200 of those people that saw advertisements clicked through. That's actually a really low click-through rate, and I wanted to explain why. Towards the beginning of the year, we were at a very low click-through rate because Google changed over their algorithms and the way they did things. They got rid of Google AdWords and made it Google Ads, which actually gives us a lot more opportunity to use our grant. But we were down for about two months, really, during that transition of getting those click-throughs. We're back up, and I'm happy to report, we're actually at 11.2% for our click-through rate, which is, we have to remain a 5% click-through rate to continue with that grant. So it's taken us, the very first time I stood in front of you, I was going, "We may lose this grant. We're barely at 5%." And now I'm saying, "We're double." So we're in a safe place to continue to, to continue forward with that. So, you know, some of the things that we have done and will continue to do is keep up with those tourism trends. I've been at every governor's conference on tourism over the last two years, and I've been an active member of our regional tourism, state tourism board, which helps with that. You know, we've created some detailed road trip itineraries to keep people in the area. We'll continue to do that. We have two, or we have 10 new editorials in 2019 that were created just for Explore Ratone. One highlights our downtown architecture. We have another that talks about great places to eat and different things like that. Those are 10 articles that are on our website, but also pushed out to the state. So those are picked up on things like New Mexico True and their social media sites. I have on here, "To continue, refresh photo assets." That was one of the biggest challenges we had when we took over the website, was we didn't have a lot of photos. With the help of our branding team, we actually have now hired and completed four different photo shoots. There's been a total of four different photographers that have been helping us out with this, one of which I really have to tip my hat to Lori and the branding team. They got some of the best, greenest pictures of the golf course I've ever seen over the last, I guess it was the weekend before last. It's great. There's action shots, and it's things that we can use for advertising, which is what we want at the end of the day. So I'm really excited about that. So with that, what I'd like to do is, I provided you a couple of screenshots of what I've done to our website, but I wanted to take just a quick moment because I think you're going to be happy to see some of the changes that we've been able to make. You'll see, this is a brand-new page that didn't exist very long ago. One of the things that we found by using our Google AdWords Grant is people are looking for places to live affordably. And Ratone really fits that bill. About 45% of the traffic coming to Explore Ratone were people looking for affordable living. And so we needed to make sure we're capturing their information and providing them with more relocation information about our community. And so this is a very basic site at this point, but I've got some really neat features that are starting to work. So considering relocating, I used four of the most searched terms, I guess you should say, walkability. It's something we take for granted, but it's something that's searched on almost daily. You can see here, 98,000 average home price. That is what Zillow and Trulia have Ratone as. And that's what a lot of other people look at whenever they're looking for information. So that's a safe number to use. Easy access to Colorado and Texas. We know our location is great. And then access to mountains and clean water and nature is another huge draw for people looking at relocating. So one of the things I hear all the time is we don't have one place to find all of the houses that are for sale in Ratone. It doesn't happen. We have several different realty agents using a lot of different tools, including Realtor.com, Trulia.com, and their own specific websites. But I was able to spend some time working on what I like to call an API. It's a real fancy word to say. We can now do some really neat search things. We have Ratone, New Mexico in here as the location. And if you hit search, what it's going to do, it's going to provide us with the home listings. And this is based upon our Ratones zip code here. You can see it kind of outlines Ratone. You can zoom in on that map. You can see where these houses are located. You can see the prices of these homes that are for sale. And this has just over 80 homes listed on this API. So we were able to get Zillow pools from Realtors, Zillow pools from Trulia, even though they're competitors. Once you get into the developmental tools on the backend, you can really pull for a lot. So is this absolutely 100% all-inclusive? Not if someone's not listed online, and not if they're not listed in a way Google can find them. It's not. But there's 88 houses, and this is in a very fair way because you don't know who the Realtor is until you click on it and you get into the information. And so having this, it doesn't give you a direct link to one Realtor over the other, but it provides you some really interesting information and some house choices because a lot of people, when they start to look at relocation, they look online first. It's the easiest place to get info. And so this is something that, you'd be surprised, there just wasn't a really easy fix for, so it took some time. The second thing that I'm really excited to show you about, looking for work, and this is something that's going to be changed very soon because this Google Jobs that is the third one down is now working much better. And this is another one of those plugins. I think you've heard from many people in town, there's no place to find all the jobs in one place. You know, you have the state website, and that's always going to be different. So we're going to have to link to the state website. But Google now has a job search feature. And what I love about it is the fact that it really has a little bit of everything for everyone on here. Sorry, it's hard to see where my little mouse is up here. But where am I at? Let's see. What I'm trying to show you, if I can get there, is, ha-ha, here we are. You see Dollar General, of course, those ads are going to be here. You see Security Officer. I didn't know we needed a security officer in Ratone. I found some jobs on here that are legitimate. I called and checked to make sure that I wasn't promoting things that weren't happening. But you even have the deli clerk from Super Save up here. You have Denny's back kitchen work. You have Tractor Supply Company, all in one place. This isn't something that had really existed, other than like the Career Builders or the Monsters. And those are paid places that people have to go to post their jobs. This pulls anything that's on Snag a Job, on Monster, on Career Builder. It's even pulling stuff from KRTN. I have a separate, a separate place where you can go directly to KRTN for that information. But when Billy and their team update KRTN, it's pulling the information in to Google. And so we've kind of started to fill that backend that hadn't been filled in a long time because it's just time-consuming. And so now that we kind of have this and the ability to see a lot of the jobs that we have in Ratone at one place, in the near future, I foresee offering a class for, you know, employers to say, "If you don't have your jobs online, we can at least show you how to do it," so that this is something that's available and it's free. So that's something that we can do to kind of reach out. But having one place that has some of these smaller jobs, you know, we're constantly talking about how there's jobs that we're unable to fill, you know, hopefully this can help. Then I used a lot of, I have a little quote here from someone who recently relocated from Colorado into Ratone. We talk about our fresh mountain water, our outdoor recreation, and then the economic development hub that we're starting to develop right here. Then I said, "Get to know your community." Our internet's a bit slow. This does go and scroll, and we have about 30 different pictures in there of people doing things. And then I linked out, one of the things that I really believe about our community is that we have strong organizations, and a lot of them, that offer some things that get overlooked. And so this actually links out to everybody's separate website. Alternatives to Violence is here, Zia Youth is here, the Ratone Youth Alliance, Qantas. And if they don't have their own page, which a lot of them do, you know, it actually links out to the national page on what their organization does and has a local phone number. But it does link directly out to any of these organizations, so people can see what we stand for. Like, what is Zia Youth? What do I want to support? You know, what's happening in Ratone? So that's a new addition to what we've been doing. That relocation page was put up about a month and a half ago, and it's been a work in progress because some of those APIs and different things, those plugins that we put on, they, they're they're not perfect. They're going to continue to need some fine-tuning, but I think this is a big step in the right direction to, to try and centralize some of that information for people that aren't here, aren't here, that are wanting to relocate. So I wanted to share that with you. Do you have any questions on this?
It's a good job.
Yeah, thanks. I, I, I'm smiling because this had me puzzled for quite a while. And so every time I'd sit down to think about, what would I put on a relocation page? I can come up with a bunch of bullet points, but I had a really hard time figuring out how to make it happen. So we've got that now. Then last but not least, this is something I'm excited about. I'll give you the option on whether or not you want to watch it. About an hour before I came in here, I got our very first rough draft from our videographers, and it's a minute and a half. It's about relocating to RatTone. This has a lot of the run to RatTone footage that they got in there, but it was really cool because it has some outside perspective as well. This is not fine-tuned. It's funny, they put me in there at the beginning, and I was talking, assuming it was a voiceover, not on camera. That's going to change. So there's some changes in there that we need to make. But I, I was really impressed knowing that they were here. They got over, we have over 200 hours worth of filming. While they were here, they had 32 interviews. They did deep dives into seven of our businesses, and their eye for detail was amazing. They were able to take their drone, and while they were at Cold Beer, they're like, "Let's go up the canyon." They got the Palisades at Sunset in a way that I've never seen before. That may not be in RatTone, but the video is amazing. They got the NRA. They got down in the shooting ranges with their drones. Filmont allowed us to go out there, and they actually got a group of Boy Scouts at the top of Tooth of Time waving and putting on a show for them. Like, some of the stuff that they got was way above and beyond what I expected. And so not only do we have over 100 hours about our town, but we have some really cool stuff about the attractions in our area. So I've never attempted to play a video in the chamber, so we're going to see how this goes. I plugged in audio. I plugged in video. Obviously, the color is off. That's a whole nother issue, but we're going to give this a shot. And I did. I left for about 17 years. And after traveling... So let's back this up again and see. Hopefully you can hear it from my speakers because that audio did not work. It was funny. Whenever I was younger, I was one of those things like, "I'm going to get out of RatTone." And I did. I left for about 17 years. And after traveling, I was actually living in New York, but I made the decision to move home. And it's the best decision I've made in a long time. We came to RatTone, and we were just kind of blown away.
It's a blend between my love of the desert and my love of the mountains.
There's so many well-preserved historic buildings in town and beautiful architecture and kind of this trapped-in-time feeling.
I love the signage, all this vintage signage. It's just one of those towns where you've got to spend a little time to really get the gist of it. It's really sleepy at night. In the evenings, it's cool. Everything's kind of shut down, and I can, when I shut the door, I can work. You could take a ride up one of our roads going towards the old line. Going over Bobcat Pass, through Simroon Canyon.
If you need leatherwork, there's no one better in the world than Andy Solano. He's been doing it for more than 50 years. He does saddles, he does boots. We have people that fly in just to get them made by Andy. The Historic Shore Theater, which was open in 1914 or 1915, and still has a lot of shows and is perfectly preserved inside. Around the corner is Bruno's. If you haven't been there, they have the best green chili pizza you can find in New Mexico. If people, I think we in Hanzo... Relentless folks ever. You can't even get out of grocery store. It's a forward-thinking place, and we want people to feel that sense of community where together we can grow, and we can make RatTone a better place.
This is the best place on earth, and millions, best people, the best organizations, the best weather, and it's home.
All right, guys, so that is the beginning of, hopefully, a whole lot of videos. This is one of four. And they're like, "This was just for fun." They added our logo at the end there. They're going to do a lot more branding to it. But this was like Bill, "Hey, I worked on this for two hours. What do you think?" And I'm going, "This is fantastic." And considering this is two minutes of over 100 minutes that they got, we can break, dice, slice this data in any way we want. But I wanted you to get an idea because I came to you with kind of an idea of, can we pay their travel expenses out here? I promise they're going to be worth it. Like, this is $4,000, and I promise their time will be worth it, and I really think that this is a good indication that it will be. So I wanted to share that with you because I was excited. But...
It's very nice.
Yeah, it's a nice start. So... Do you have any other questions or comments at this point?
Just like to say, as far as the website, it's, we've struggled with websites in RatTone for a long time, as I well know, but I just think everything that has been happening to ExploreRatTone in the last year or so has been awesome. The, I don't know if you guys have had time, but those, the articles are wonderful. The photos, that now that it's been, you know, with the new brand on there, it has a whole fresh look. I think that's awesome. But those, the, the real estate and the job tools, that is unbelievable. I mean, not having MLS is a frustrating thing.
Very much.
And so creating your own MLS and being able to use that, I think, for people visiting the website, that's, if I was going to move somewhere, that's the first thing I'm looking for.
Right.
Real estate and a job, right there. And you get pulls of everything, everything that it possibly can, you know, that's out there. There's always going to be things that, that are on the fringes that are harder to find, but I, I just...
There will.
I can't say enough how valuable that is as a tool.
I appreciate that because it was one of the biggest challenges, is trying to figure out how to communicate to people that aren't here on the ground, because we do have a lot of jobs that are open, but we know because of word of mouth, not necessarily because of this. Or we know what Realtors to talk to in town, but if you're not here, it can be difficult. So, thank you. I appreciate that. It's been fun. To be honest, it's been fun. It's a lot of work, and there's still a lot of work to be done, but it's been fun.
Well, I think the Affordable Living Campaign that you've run on Google Ads, I mean, I've multiple people that I've met that have moved here, and I don't know if it's just because of that or just because of the exposure we're getting online, but it's, it's phenomenal, the number of people that I meet in just a few weeks that are relocating.
I officially have had a total of, because last week I had two more, a total of six different people that have called or come into the center to say, "I saw your ad, and I moved here. Now what? Like, how can we be involved in something bigger?" And so it, it's, it's working, I promise. There's some people out here that'll tell you that it is. It just takes time. And you're going to get a bigger marketing update from me after the next Lodger's Tax Advisory Board meeting. But what we're doing, we have the data to finally support. JP and I, I think you probably saw the interview that I did with JP Rodman for KOBTV. It was, it was seen over 19,000 times online after it aired on TV. The day that it dropped, we actually had over 127 people follow through to purchase something, whether or not they actually paid, but followed through, put something in their cart, and went to purchase something because of that ad running on KOBTV. So we're connecting the dots in the right places, I think, to see what we finally need to see. It just takes time and a little bit of patience, and that's a hard part.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Commission, as stated, in your packet, you have a memorandum from Michael Antinucci. And as we've said here, due to one open seat that we've had for several months on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and then just some summer travel, we have not been able to get a quorum for Lodger's Tax Advisory Board meeting for several months now. So this comes to you for your consideration without a recommendation from the board. And of course, later in the, the agenda here, we'll talk about filling that empty seat. But yeah, we, we don't have that recommendation for you tonight. However, this is the, the proposed renewal of an existing agreement. So you can see the results that the agreement has had, and as Jessica stated, we now are, that, that agreement has, has expired. So we felt there was a timing issue to bring it to the Commission tonight without further delay.
Are we able to cover July as well, so it goes back and starts in July? Is that how it... July?
Well, I think the service has certainly been provided.
Yeah, I think we've had it, it just hasn't been paid for, so we...
Yeah, that's, I think, our intent is to...
To do a 12-month contract for this fiscal year.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve contract between City of RatTone and Center for Community Innovation. We have our digital marketing services for our exploration.com.
Second motion.
Very good. Got a motion and a second to approve the contract between City of RatTone and Center for Community Innovation. Is there any other discussion? Michael, I want to take a little poll vote on this.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work. Okay, and let's move on to that Lodger's Tax Appointment Item G. Deliberate an Act on Appointment to Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
Mayor Protem and Commission, in your packet, you have one application to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. That's been submitted by Barbara Riley. She, Ms. Riley is an operator of a local lodging facility in RatTone, has been on the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board in the past, is familiar with that process. I would mention that there is a state statute that does provide for qualifications of members of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. And in that statute, it has a provision that two seats on the five-person board must be filled by persons in the lodging industry, lodgers. And so Mrs. Riley fits that requirement. That's the, the need that we have on the board is a lodger, and those are a little bit difficult to find. So fortunately, Mrs. Riley has submitted her application to the board, and I certainly would give my recommendation to this appointment.
Yeah, I think Mrs. Riley will be a good addition. Any questions or concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve Barbara Riley for the appointment for Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Barbara Riley as the appointment to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. All in favor, indicate by the side of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On July 24th, I attended the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization Meeting in Las Vegas, New Mexico. There, I had updated and shared information with the group as far as work that's going on in RatTone with the city, specifically in the transportation area. While in Las Vegas, I also had a meeting with the new District Four Engineer. That is James Gallegos of New Mexico Transportation Department. And we talked about several issues, myself and Mr. Gallegos. Mr. Gallegos is new to District Four, although he's been, he's a longtime employee of the Department of Transportation. I did discuss the travel, traffic bottleneck that we have discussed previously at the intersection of I-25 and US 6487, and I reported to him that this was beginning to be a chronic issue in RatTone, and severe enough to the point that we would need to call out law enforcement when this occurs for traffic control purposes. Mr. Gallegos said that the DOT had been talking about this a little bit. They were aware of the issue, and they were talking about providing funding for the plant, proceeding with the planning phase of improvements to the I-24, I-25, US 6487 interchange. That's a very challenging project. A design process like that would typically take a significant amount of time and involve some public hearings in the community, so I would look for that to happen after, well, in 2020, I would imagine, as they do some design, and that's done by a consulting firm typically. I think that we'll hear back from them, and the public will have a chance to comment on the, on that design. And as I stated, it's going to be something that looks different than it does now. It's, it's a challenge there at that intersection, and I would say that DOT, like a lot of states, is really innovating design on some of these interchanges. I don't know if some of you have been through the new interchange project at Santa Fe off of I-25. It's, it's different. And I, I think that can be confusing to, to motorists at some point, but there's some innovative stuff going on to eliminate these bottlenecks and make traffic movements more effective. I also discussed conditions on Second Street throughout RatTone. I pointed out to the district engineer that we had some unacceptable conditions as far as accessible ramps, as far as heaving concrete on sidewalk, even on medians, some of the, some of the deterioration that we have from that project. And I pointed out that the City of RatTone may have some responsibilities on Second Street, and the DOT certainly has responsibilities on Second Street. There is an agreement back from the 1990s delineating those responsibilities, and I suggested that we meet here in RatTone with our agreements in hand and decide who's doing what. But we really need to fix some of these problems that we've got on Second Street, and I did get a positive response from Mr. Gallegos on that. With Mayor Segada, I attended the Energy Summit that was held in Albuquerque on August 15th, 2019. That was an event that was organized by Senator Martin Heinrich in collaboration with the Rocky Mountain Institute. So we were in attendance and got some good information about what other municipalities are doing as far as energy conservation measures or in general, best practices regarding energy. And so we got a lot of good information there. While we were on that trip, the mayor and I met with Alicia Keys. She is the Secretary of New Mexico Economic Development Department, and we did that again on August 5th. So with Secretary Keys, we had discussed RatTone's economic development plan, that we stated that that's being prepared by the City of RatTone with consultation with Better City. We went through some of the specifics of that plan. We specifically talked about workforce development strategies that we're discussing in RatTone, business expansion in RatTone, and then the outdoor recreation strategy. We did cover the proposal in Colorado for expansion of public lands there. We talked about the potential of more expansion additions to that plan, both in Colorado and New Mexico. And I think we had a very positive, had a very positive discussion with Secretary Keys. Of course, on her staff is Mark Roper, a RatTone native, who had been involved in economic development in RatTone in past years. So that's great that we have a RatTone person involved in this at a high level. And then Governor Lujan Grisham had sent a senior advisor to the meeting as well, and so it was good to have a representative of the governor's office at that meeting as well. One other thing, Mayor Protem, I would very happy to announce that RatTone Water Works is the 2019 recipient of the Outstanding Water Treatment Plant Award. This is coming from the Rocky Mountain section of the American Water Works Association. RatTone Water Works staff will receive the award at the annual conferences to be held in Keystone, Colorado on September 9th coming up. So congratulations, Mr. Campbell. I think this is the third... I think this is the third significant award that RatTone Water Works has collected in the past year. So this is a lot of dedication from Dan's staff. He's got a staff of dedicated water plant, treatment plant operators. We take that for granted. We turn on the tap, we expect water to be there, we expect it to meet all the requirements and taste good, but that does not happen by accident. Dan and his staff really are, are dedicated to making that happen. This all happens as well in the middle of a major rehabilitation of that plant that's going on now, and so construction is proceeding along. And Dan, I would say that that will be completed close to the end of 2019.
Yeah, the goal is substantial completion by January 1st.
So that, construction is proceeding well. And of course, they keep the, the water flowing through all of the, all the phases of construction. So a lot of dedication there with Dan and his staff. That's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Is there any other business to go? Is there any other business to come before this meeting tonight? In that case, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.